This meeting is being recorded. If you're present and wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your meeting address, and speak directly towards the microphone the entire time you're addressing the event. We also have some speakers or interested individuals to join the meeting by video or teleconference using the Zoom platform as published in our meeting notification. If you are in or Zoom audience, please keep your mic on mute for those who are wanting to listen to the call. Those joining us via the Zoom app or through your computer, please click on the raised hand button. Those joining us through the call and pitch it, please press star and nine. This will notify our moderator, Mr. Randy Dunster. If we have a comment from one of our virtual attendees and he will let me know if he wishes to speak, I will then have him unmuted. When you speak, also, please state your meeting address. If you please join me for the debate.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, with the liberty and justice for all.
I have three items under consent this evening. First was approved in minutes coming August 21st, 24th, twice in council. Second approved of the claims and approved disposition of the claims for the period of August 19th, 2025 to September 2nd, 2025. In third, to approve block art permit application of both November 16th through the 7th of June 20th from the 4th in the 4th day of the month. Is there any other questions from the boardroom or group assistance? I have room for passengers all through the zone.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
And four, I'll now open the public hearing on an application for the community development block grant program or street improvement program located at Fifth Corso between 11th and 19th Street for a total estimated cost of $1,007,192, funding of $630,000.
My name is Tom Ellis. I'm with Southeast Nebraska Department District. I'm here tonight to help you with the public hearing and provide you a little bit more information on the project. So the city is requesting community development block grants. This is a hub program for street improvement. It's between 11th Street and so on the Fifth Corso between 11th Street and 19th Street. It's identified in your six, in your one and six year plan. And as we have noted, the estimated project cost is $1,007,192. The city will be applying for a $630,000 CDG grant. Deadline for this application is September 15th. There's a 30% match for this, so basically actually I believe over matching with 180,000 from the city and then 197,192 provided by the city from the highway allocation and service transportation front. So this particular project is taking place in our qualified census block group. There are a couple of ways the city can qualify for these and we work with your city staff. With a survey, we come survey, she staff did a amazing job helping us with this. We distributed 1,100 surveys across three rounds. At this point, the city as a whole is 45.21% loan awarded. You have to meet the 51% threshold. That particular area of town, that particular qualified census block group is 51%. So that's why you're able to have an application in that territory. So if, that's pretty much the, that's the bulk of the application itself. If there are people in the audience that are interested in this project, I strongly encourage them to come to the microphone and say something encouraging for the project or the city council. I do know this is going to be a very, very competitive application to cycle this year. So we have asked all of our member communities that are applying for grants to provide better support, to encourage people in the public hearing to say something positive about the project so we can include those in the application. Once again, very, very competitive application process this year, so.
Mr. Brown? I'm going to make the timeline to submit, depending on what the decision is. We're not going to receive it right now.
So we anticipate, every year it differs a little bit. We anticipate it happens somewhere between Halloween and Thanksgiving. So you know by then timeline for the project, if it's awarded, we would get noticeable awards sometime in that period. Then there's a step called special conditions. Special conditions is the environmental review, making sure that there are processes in place with someone that doesn't speak English or has an English or a second language has questions and you as a city staff, you as a city, you know how to address those types of questions. That's usually about 90 days. So potentially you'd be bidding this out of anxiety, I'm sure. I imagine with the way Marty is, he's already got this anxiety. So. He does. He does. So I'm going to leave this for you, Randy. So this is the draft narratives and anyone has questions about the project as a whole, feel free to review this. This is a draft. So there's still be some by your edits taking place on it. And then, Randy, I think you have all of the forms that need to be signed. Yeah, if you guys, if the council has any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer those, otherwise.
Can you just form a line behind me? Chairman, I was pressing the right speaker in favor of the city's application for a $630,000, $1,000 for CDG funds.
Lisa Walker with Economic Development here in Nebraska City and I have written a letter in favor of this, but I'm also saying in front of you guys that it would be a positive to do this, so thank you.
Marty Stowall, Construction Facility Manager. So it's just about three or four times for the council, but obviously this is a project that is engine on being successful with the grant, so just just for beginning.
Chairman, I was pressing the right speaker in favor of the application. Sorry, the president would like to speak in opposition to the application. This time I move to be closing the public hearing on the application for community development block grant program for a street improvement program located at Fifth Corso between 11th and 19th Street for a total estimated cost of $1,007,192, CDG funding of $630,000. Motion is second for the discussion.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Report new business resolution 2998.
Resolution 2998 dash 25 authorizes chief elected official to sign an application for a CDGD bonus where as the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska, and eligible unit of the government general, local government authorized to file an application under the Housing Community Development Act of 1974 as amended for small cities, community development block grant program. And whereas the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska, has obtained its citizens' comments on the community development housing needs and has conducted public hearing on the proposed application, received favorable public comment respecting the application for the amount of $630,000 for street improvements and will therefore be a result. By the city council of the city of Nebraska City, the mayor be authorized and directed to proceed with the formulation pending all contracts, documents, or other veranda between the city of Nebraska City and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. So as to effect exceptions, our degree of.
All motion that we approve resolution 2998 dash 25 on an application for the community development block grant program for a street improvement program located at Fifth Corso between 11th Street and 19th Street for a total estimated cost of $1,007,192 and CDG funding of $630,000.
Motion is second for the discussion. For partners.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. Thank you for getting off and coming down and joining us. Appreciate it. Thank you Marty for your work. I'm six, discussion slash action regarding the honey moles and the city property north of the transfer station.
In the last council meeting, we discussed the renewal of the honey moles to Mr. Walters and sent some changes over to Drew Graham for review. So the copy you have in your packet reflects the changes, which included an easement for Good Life Bag and also understanding that when they began work that the lease would then stop essentially. Questions on the lease? Concerns that have since come forward?
Karen Stiggy, 1506 South 90th Street, O'Hana, Nebraska. Since this action would affect our potential having access to our land, we're wondering where we are at with that. And does the city plan to entertain given this access to our land through the new contract?
Sure. It's not written into the current contract, but I would open up to discussion, including the easements. I know at one time we had gotten to the point where we had agreed upon, I believe it was a 10-foot easement to your property. More we got hung up on was a termination clause. And that's about where it ended and that we're back to not really square one, the new lease and we have an easement. So I guess I would ask Councilor Gages about taking it back to Drew Graham, to be approved the lease as it is tonight and come back with an amendment or do we want to table and come back with an easement agreement or mistaking? Concern is, I mean, yeah, it's not on our agenda tonight, so I guess not.
But the lease is settled.
Police is settled, right.
I would like to give back to Drew on turn number six, entry by landlord. The lease capacity would be entered by landlord or those authorized by the landlord. And get proposed language to give the 10-foot easement at the west side. For access to the street. What we discussed earlier, we discussed you more here.
We discussed putting in a fence and, you know, getting a.
Survey.
Survey. Getting the survey and putting in a fence. That was one of the stipulations that was going to take place. After having some discussion with hearing today, you know, we were wondering if we could just put in some posts, you know, with tape or colored mark, you know, colored paint to identify where that 10-foot marking is. So we stayed on that side of it. I guess my question is, once you come up with a kind of a final proposal, would it share property of that with me so I can view it and review it? Do I have any questions regarding that?
We should be able to do that by the rest of you.
Yeah. I reached out to her again just to hear her back, so it seems like you're some back home.
Well, there, there was also that issue with the termination clause. Will that be an issue or included or changed?
I'm, I'm going to let Marty speak here, I guess. I see it as any other easement to any other property, that is fine.
So Stiggy, I don't want to speak out of turn. Marty Stowall, Construction Facility Manager. So this lease is written, this excludes the west 50 feet of the property. So it's not included. So a future access, I feel, is still on the table to be able to agree to that with the, we have a draft agreement with getting into the property with the 10 feet that we're all talking about. So I feel like the lease as written is okay with this 50 feet and we can still do what, how to do it. And I feel, and this is where I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think there's going to be some property exchange if they would ever break ground where this terminates, your ownership's probably going to change too, correct?
Potentially. Yeah, nothing's in.
Nothing's going to break ground without probably that happening, so.
Nothing's in stone. We don't even have.
We're not turning ground yet, but that is the intent.
Yes, that's the intent, okay. I guess my, my concern is I want to make sure that we have access should the potential change with GLA not take place. That's, that's my biggest concern because that could be a year, year and a half from now and we don't know what's going to happen. If they find out it's not feasible or not economical or whatever, then we'd be back to square one.
I think it would be the 10-foot, would get that, would that lineage back in?
Excuse me ma'am, I think what Marty was saying, and I may be wrong, but that 10-foot that we're discussing is outside of this lease agreement here. It's already been, so there's 10-foot and there's 25-foot of that that's completely out of this lease. So that's not part of it. Is that correct, Marty?
Correct. 50 feet of the west line is not included. So if we did a 10-foot for this access that's being proposed, it's still on the table. It's not being leased. We can provide that.
Which is the last sentence of paragraph two, number one, process. Well, that's already in, so the lease is good going, it presents it remains as public grant.
All motion that we approve the honey moles on the city property worth of the transfer station.
Motion is second for the discussion. For a call, please.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. Thank you all for that.
I am seven, discussion slash action regarding the request from NCTC to approve the use of Sunken Parking Lot for the chalk to start the talk. Event on Friday, September 12th, 2025 from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Amy Alka, Nebraska City Tourism and Homes, doesn't matter, 5268 L Road. NCTC submitted this request on behalf of Shine Your Light and Kathy and Tanner are here to talk more about it, so I'm going to let them have to say what you want, the event being held.
Tanner Koho, Certified Peer Sports Specialist in Nebraska City.
Kathy Martin, 1506 Morgan Drive in Nebraska City and member of Shine Your Light in Nebraska City.
So Stephanie and Ryan, they are out of town, so they sent us in here to speak for them and Stephanie gave me this to read, so I'm going to read it as heard. My name is Stephanie Roth, obviously not. I am a co-founder of Shine Your Light Nebraska City, a local nonprofit dedicated to raising awareness for mental health. Our mission is to eliminate the shame and stigma surrounding mental illness and suicide. We come together with a common purpose to offer hope to those who are fighting the battle and to stand with those who have loved and lost. Thank you for making mental health a priority and for being leaders and reducing the stigma that too often silences people. Together, we are part of the solution. We're helping to build a community that doesn't turn away from hard topics, but instead faces them with compassion, understanding, and action. Suicide is preventable and sometimes our awareness can be very lifeline to someone's needs. Ryan and I are out of town this week. Tanner and Kathy are attending in our absence. We are requesting to reserve the Sunken Parking Lot on September 12th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a chalk party in honor of Suicide Prevention Week, which is next week. We are spreading hope by creating art with sidewalk chalk. Shine Your Light Nebraska City is a small group with a powerful message. We exist to remind our community that you're not alone. Your story matters and together we can break the silence and spread hope. Thank you all for your support.
I would like to also add that the week prior to that, we're encouraging businesses, home, you know, people in their homes to do sidewalk chalk with words of encouragement, affirmations, just positivity throughout, you know, sidewalks in town, in front of your business, in front of your homes, and we're leading that up to the big event on the 12th that we are requesting. Then we can all get together and just, you know, kids have fun. We will have resources there that if people do have some issues or questions or we will have resources there to turn them to if anybody feels like they need to help or anybody to talk to as well. Thank you.
Follow motion to approve the request from NCTC to approve the use of the Sunken Parking Lot for the chalk to start the talk event, Friday, September 12th, 2025 from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
All second. Motion is second for the discussion. For a call, please.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Soski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
About 10 minutes, thank you. I have any discussion slash action regarding the request for the Applejack Festival of the, for 2025.
All right. We are gearing up for the 57th Applejack Festival again this year and I want to start by saying how grateful I am to the city of Nebraska City for all of your support. NCTC often gets the credit for having one of the biggest fall festivals in this area of the nation, but the truth is we couldn't do it without the city's support or all the local businesses doing all they do to contribute to the festival. In your packet, I do have a bunch of requests that we are requesting help from the city and multiple departments. I've tried to organize them by dates. This year, our kickoff is September 19th through the 20th, that first weekend, and that will be all of our traditional Applejack events that people have grown to love, although by the second weekend, the 26th through the 28th, where we really push the orchards and our community and getting people out downtown. We already know they're coming to the orchards, so we try to provide things downtown to get them downtown. The best part of the second weekend this year is it's a bye week. So welcome Husker fans to Applejack. The carnival is, I'm just going to go over, it's pretty detailed in your packets. If you have anything that you want to pull out and discuss further, let me know. The carnival typical, we will close the street with your permission at 7 o'clock on Thursday so that it can be set up and ready to go by Friday. There is a flea market that is down in front of Little Ted's between Third and Fifth Street on Central Avenue and we will ask to close that street at 8 o'clock in the morning. That allows for traffic to Little Ted's after the Thursday games and that allows for childcare to pick up and, or drop off rather, at 8:00 in the morning. We have another craft show happening on Ninth Street that happened last year. It was from Central Avenue to First Corso and this year they would like to extend it to the north side from Central to the alley. I have talked to the fort about their Saturday shipments and they have none, so that shouldn't be a problem. And Browns and Crush on the other side of the street are excited to have the extra traffic with the craft show being on that side street.
So it'll go on the north side of Central, but Central's.
Central stays open.
Oh, there'll just be some on the north side.
Yep. So on the south side, it will go all the way to First Corso and on the north side, just to the alley. They're going to cut it off, so they'll still have access to the alley, but yeah, and the street central will be open. The food courts are going to stay the same. We have one at Arbor Bank and one down at Sixth Street for the carnival. The one at Arbor Bank, last year was our first year of closing the street so that we could spread out our food trucks and that worked out great, so we'd like to continue to do that. We are asking for help with trash and nine picnic tables at each location. With your permission, we will work with the utilities to get the power board at Arbor Bank up and running and they will drop off the power board for us to use down at the Sixth Street Parking Lot. The parade, everything again stays the same. If you remember, a few years ago, we've extended it to wrap around in Sixth Street down to First Corso and that is working great. There is an addition in the second paragraph of parade. We would like to block off this parking lot here for the National Guard parking. National Guard sends about 20 to 30 National Guard people and this is where they meet up, so this parking would be more beneficial. They were still parking down at the armory and walking up, so if we can get this, that would be a little better. The parade route will stay the same. The street department does a great job blocking all of those roads and we would like to continue to have Sixth Street all the way to Fourth Corso and that is where we park the marching band buses, which has worked out great because that is where the end of the parade is, so all those students carry their instruments right onto their bus. We are requesting a trailer on Central Avenue right in front of the courthouse and two picnic tables on that trailer and that is where the marching band judges sit. That works easy for us because then Raymond can just come and move it and we don't have to find a driver to get all those moved. We'd like to continue after the parade with the street being closed between 14th and 15th Street for the water barrel fights. We would like to request use of Memorial Land Saturday, the 20th for some ethnic food groups that would like to sell food. They follow the same guidelines as our other two food courts, it's just they have a, they don't need quite the space that the other food courts have. Requesting permission to put about 20 port potties around town. We don't need anything with the bus route other than permission to put no parking in certain areas of the street down by the post office so that the bus can get turned around. The run is ran by the Beta Sigma Phi group and everything stays the same with that. They're not changing the route and we do send six National Guard to help with that, so we don't usually need police assistance. Fast forward to the next weekend, September 26th through the 28th, the Sweet Pickens, Pickens Vendor Fair that happens at Lord's and they request no parking on Fifth Street and that is so that those who are bringing in their trailers to unload can get in and out of there without double traffic on both sides. The Creative District is partnering with NCTC for the cider stroll. They're providing live music, so we would like to close the street between Seventh and Eighth Street to have a beer garden around that live music. That stays the same, but we're adding some things to it, which we'll talk about later in the meeting. Those 18 picnic tables that we use in both of the parking lots, the one at Arbor Bank, we have nine, one down at the carnival at nine, we're requesting to put those 18 tables in the beer garden area, actually 16. We'd like to share two of those with the Applejack Jamboree. But Raymond stores those in the Sunken Parking Lot during the week between, so he doesn't have to carry them all the way back to the park if that. But Raymond stores those in the Sunken Parking Lot during the week between, so he doesn't have to carry them all the way back to the park, if that is okay with you guys. And then September 28th, the second weekend, some of the ethnic food groups are considering being there as well, but they were on the fence. So I told them that for this year, I would ask so that we have use of the space should they need it, but I can let you know what they decide. For both weekends, we're asking permission to have Applejack Wayfinding sign throughout town and permission for the big chair to be down in front of the Sunken Parking Lot. With hopefully some spursing up by June, because she's kind of ugly right now. That chair.
First we came Memorial Lane, it always said.
Just batteries.
You have the last year, the 9th Street, excuse me, the 9th Street from Central South, the First Corso, what are we doing with the alley?
So last year, we put barricades in front of the alley, just a one barricade so that people couldn't get through.
So blocking off the alley east and west?
And that's where Fort had a concern, that's why when I went in to talk to them, they said they had no shipments. That is their only alley access to get those shipments in, so it should be okay. And then we'll let the rest of the businesses know down the street east that they won't be able to get in and out. And while you're on that, was that a mission last year getting in and out?
I think, yeah, but we got it.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a issue, but we got it. We went down from, I think we went down from the bank, from the alley, down the alley.
So they don't put vendors in front of there, just kind of not having, through, through traffic is not allowed?
But we got there early enough, Amy, so it wasn't that.
Okay. Got this work, Steve, this concern, so if we have an emergency, we do have access through the alley to get there as well as through Central.
All motion that we approve the request from NCTC to approve the Applejack Festival event for 2025.
All second. Motion second for the discussion. Go call please.
Commissioner Sharpe?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
I have nine, intention slash action to approve the SGL application from Little Ted's, Huddersfield Grill, to be held on 16th and 20th from 5:00 p.m. to midnight, and close Central Avenue from 8th to 9th Streets.
Hello, honey, self, 368 North 62nd Road. As you guys probably haven't kept track, but I have. It's our one-year anniversary at our new fabulous store. And we've been open now for six years, and I kind of wanted to do a thank you back to the community. And so I wanted to do a kind of a creation celebration, and I wanted to have a street dance. And a little bar, little, I guess a beer, beer garden is what they call it. And I'd asked that the council consider closing off the 800 block, or at least half of the 800 block, at least in front of my gallery, of Central Avenue during the hours of, whatever it was, 5:00, 5:00 and midnight. And I even have signatures, I think maybe you should have pictures of it, but I sent it over. I have signatures from all the residents that approved of that. And then I've also got Little Ted's, like I said, they're gonna come in to the small beer garden, it'll be huge. It will be no charge to the community to get into this event. This is all on, this is on me, but if they want to buy some beer, then they're gonna have to buy it, so.
Your closure request is midnight, but the SGL is on until 10:30?
That's because that's when she wanted to cut off the drinking, which is fine.
I just want the material.
Yes, yes.
All motion to approve the SGL application from Little Ted's Huddersfield Grill, to be held on September 20th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. to midnight, and to close Central Avenue. Wait, wait a second, from 5:00 p.m. till the SGL at 10:30, and to close Central Avenue from 8th Street to 9th Street from 5:00 to midnight.
All second. Motion second for the discussion. Go call please.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharpe?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy, good luck with that. Congratulations, we're here.
Items 10 and 11, I own a business that's within the proposed SGL location for the cider stroll, so I'm going to recuse. For that reason, I'm number 10, it could be financially positive for the business in that part of it. And I'm number 11, I'll recuse because it could be, it's for a competitor, it might not be as I would. So I'll recuse.
All right, item 10, intention slash action to approve the SGL application from NCTC to be held on September 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and to close Central Avenue from 7th Street to 8th Street for the cider stroll event.
He's a little taller. Amy Algood, 5268 Eldorado. We have recruited, requested permission to use the street. This is the request to have an SGL in that area. This came from, the first couple of years we had the cider stroll, we had so many participants that they couldn't enjoy their drink within, well, they had to because they couldn't come outside of the bar with their drink. But that got very crowded, and the whole point of the cider stroll is to get people into each of those establishments and to get their drink. And when they have to stay there and hurry up because there's such a line, it's not an enjoyable experience. So we're asking permission to turn that portion of the street into a beer garden. So once they get their drink, they can come outside, enjoy the live music, and enjoy the drink, and just enjoy Nebraska City as a whole. Also, on a side note, the new barricades that we have are fabulous, and they work great for events like this because they are tall enough to work within the guidelines of the SGL. Probably inappropriate because we just talked about budget, but we maybe need three more to effectively go building to building. When we measured first, we just measured streets, but when you have a beer garden, you have to go from building to building, which adds a little more on there. So if whoever wants to order them, you just let me know, and I'll be so excited for you. We can put up more tents as well in that gap, but what's nice about those is they open, and then when we need to shut that off, that people can't come in anymore, they're just wonderful.
I have a motion to approve the SGL application from Nebraska State Tourism Commerce to be held on September 27th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and to close Central Avenue from 7th Street to 8th Street for the cider stroll event.
And seconded for the discussion, what happened?
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Vice President Sharpe?
Yes. All right, item 11, intention slash action to approve the SGL application from Serra Cider to be held on September 27th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and to close Central Avenue from 10th Street to 8th Street for the cider stroll event.
Amy Algood, 5268 Eldorado, I believe someone from Serra Cider was going to be online, so she may want to speak.
Yes, Tracy Sanford is online.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm Tracy Sanford, I'm with Serra Cider, 1746 N Street in Lincoln. And we're working with the Nebraska Commerce Chamber of Commerce to be part of the cider stroll event, where we would be providing samples to those individuals that have purchased cider stroll tickets. And then also, this SGL is a request to allow us to be able to sell the cider that they're sampling when they're there for the cider stroll. And actually, I suppose anybody else who walks into the beer garden area.
I have a motion to approve the SGL application from Serra Cider to be held on September 27th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and to close Central Avenue from 7th Street to 8th Street for the cider stroll event.
All second. Seconded for the discussion, go call please.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Vice President Sharpe?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Item 12, intention slash action to approve Wildwood Discords Center, this made grant request for the amount of $17,500, but they operate in expenses.
I motion to approve the Wildwood Discords Center to submit a grant request in the amount of $17,500, but they operate in expenses.
Motion second for the discussion. Go call please.
Commissioner Sharpe?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, item 13, intention slash action regarding a request to add a stop sign on the west end of 14th Corso and Morgan Drive.
Kathy Martin, 1506 Morgan Drive here in Nebraska City. I am the one that turned in this request. I am lucky enough that when I'm sitting in my home, I see, I get front view of people coming down that hill. With the increased traffic now that Morgan Drive has been extended, we are waiting for an accident to happen. The residents that live in that, on that rock road, they always yield, you know, look for kids, cars, whatever it may be. It's the people that just come flying down that road and want to make a quick, quick cookie. And after I got witnessed, after I witnessed, one of my neighbors and her two young children almost got hit two weeks ago or three weeks ago. Because they just came flying and didn't even look, and I just feel just for safety reasons, a stop sign being added there would really benefit our neighborhood. Thank you.
You have a concern, Mark? Cue.
All motion to approve the request to add a stop sign on the west end of 14th Corso and Morgan Drive.
I think if you have to have a resolution on this way, you're right. I'd like to come back.
I believe so.
It's not a lot to come back from with a resolution.
Stand.
Motion second for the discussion. Go call please.
Commissioner Sharpe?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Waylon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. Items 14, 15, 16, and 17 all have to rate increases with Nebraska City Utilities that come through a rate study. We're gonna give a presentation on all four areas, I think.
Yeah.
And we're gonna roll through each order as well, Mark?
Yeah, John Board, John Manor, Nebraska City Utilities. We hired John Krasky, JK Energy Consulting, to do a rate study for us. He's presented, or has a presentation to go through tonight, so if council is ready.
Can you load that up the screen as well?
Yes, please. While he's getting that up there, I'll just introduce myself. I'm the mayor, Commissioner, my name is Johnny Krasky. I'm from Smithfield, Nebraska, Lotus Point, if you happen to know where that's at. It's about 10 miles south of Lexington, just to, for, so you know where I'm at, from. Okay. Oh, there we go.
So you're starting to talk, work your way down, just.
Okay, that's on, it's great, thank you. Oh, yeah.
And I may need to make that, yeah, for the slide.
Oh, there we go, okay. So just my background, John mentioned earlier that I was retained to look at your utility rates. I looked at the electric, water, wastewater, and the gas utilities. This is the presentation, it's a summary of the results. I thought you'd prefer a summary to me reading 85 pages of report and going through every single number. Okay. It may, I may have turned that off. That was there. It's on me, sorry. That's all right. Let's try that. Hey, there we go. Technology is great when it works. So just to go through the purposes of the studies, I look at the financial performance of each utility. I look at it not just for the next fiscal year, but I look at it in the future, because things can change. You have a lot of capital projects that are going on, particularly in the electric system. So I want to get a sense of where rates need to go, not just next year, but two, three, four years down the road so we can implement rate changes on a gradual basis rather than a sudden basis. Although, if you look at the water and wastewater, you know there are some pretty drastic increases there, so. I'll go through the reasons for that when we get there. I look at projected financial results, I go through fiscal year '29, so basically four projected years on that. When I do the cost of service, I want to determine which rate classes are causing you to incur costs and calculate the, the cost of providing those customers service to revenue you're currently collecting. So that will guide the need for rate changes, not just amount of rate classes, but also components like the customer, the electric in particular, customer charge, demand charges, energy charges. This is the rate design, under state law, on the electric system, you have to provide rates that are fair, reasonable, and non-discriminatory. Other utilities, that's not codified in state statute, but those are the principles I use. It means I can't charge the city administrator a different rate than I charge the city clerk, or the mayor, or anybody else. If they're residential customers, you have to charge the same rate. Now, you can have rates that are different between commercial and residential industrial customers because there's, there's reasons for that, they're, they use energy differently, their sizes are different, so that's the reason. But nonetheless, within those classes, I can't discriminate between customers. So this study was presented to the Board of Public Works on August 12th, I was started by Zoom. On August 19th, I attended a public hearing with the Board of Public Works as well. There was, I think, one member of the public at the meeting, and no comments were received from that individual. And my understanding, remember, from that meeting, the Board of Public Works is recommending the city council approve the four rate ordinances that are before you in the agenda. I'll start with the electric utility. There, the projections for this utility are by fiscal year '29, you'll have about a $3 million operating deficit. And I think that's on about $11 million revenue, give or take. You have a pretty significant capital improvement program planned for the electric system. Industrial park development, replacement of feeders, potentially improvements with your electric generation facilities. And there's going to most likely end up being some debt issued to fund those projects. It's not all gonna come out of rate payer funds right now, but in the future, it'll be spread over 15 or 20 years to ensure that not only current customers who use those facilities are paying for it, but also future customers, or customers that may come on to your system. So those benefits are shared amongst those customers, so the costs will be shared. There's also just general cost escalation, particularly with electric utility employees. There's, I'll say linemen, technical employees, plant operators, there's a real demand for those types of. Uh, there's, I'll say linemen, technical employees, plant operators, there's a real demand for those types of folks. So it's important to maintain salaries and and benefits that are competitive with other utilities. Otherwise, you become the training program and they just go to work for the, for O P P D or Lincoln Electric System. That's not a good place to be. Uh, you have kept your salaries competitive, you don't have very much turnover in that area. But it's important to make sure you keep those salaries competitive, but then have enough money to pay those folks. So what I'm projecting for the electric utility is a four point eight percent annual increases over the next four years. Uh, all rate classes would see some increase uh based on the cost of service, residential and business A, which are your very small commercial customers. Would have a slightly larger increase than other rate classes. The ordinance that you have only implements the first two years of those rate changes. Uh, in twenty, prior to fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, I would recommend looking at rates again, looking at your financial performance, looking at the capital project plan. And see if those additional rate increases would be needed. There are some rate design changes that I'm recommending. Uh, these are fairly technical in nature, but I'll, I'll say the key one here is um all customer charge uh classes are going to see an increase in their customer charge. To help reflect the cost of service. And the PCA, that's a month, uh, currently you have a PCA that can change based on commi- uh, commission accent, action, excuse me. Uh, this is going to change that methodology to actually make adjustments based on, based on an average of six years or six months, excuse me. A rolling average of six months of power costs. So if costs go up, those costs, uh, like this is for purchase power and for generation of the power plant in Nebraska City two and so forth. If those costs go up in a given month, a portion of that will be passed directly through customers as those costs are incurred. And it'll be a rolling av- average of the six months prior, uh, any of those increases that come in through uh actual costs would be then passed through customers. Uh, that should reduce the need to have rate change of rate ordinances simply because of escalation in power costs. With the uh, the proposed ordinance would increase your typical residential bill, five dollars and forty-one cents a month. And on October first of this year and five dollars and sixty-six per month next year, so. Uh, oh, last one on this one, your rates are very competitive. Uh, I've compared your rates, this is a peer group I looked at, Auburn, Fall City, they're within the O P P D Transmission Service Area. Uh, O P P D obviously, you know, where they serve Omaha and surrounding areas. And then N P P D serves down by Humboldt, uh, I think Platymus, areas like that. So your rates are very competitive with those folks. This slide shows um in the summer time for your residential customers, you're at the, at the bottom tier of that. Uh, Auburn's a little bit lower than you, but your rates are lower than theirs in the summers or in the winter, so. Very competitive, you've done a great job of managing your electric system, procuring long-term resources, making sure that your costs are competitive with uh your neighbors. So this is the conclusions, I'm just not going to repeat that because I just said all of this, so. Any questions on the electric system?
Four point eight is across all, that's business residential or the different rates for commercial and industrial?
Yes, you do have different rates for residential and generals, uh, and the generals, uh, commercial A, yeah, general service, I think it's called.
And when you do your rate split, you also look at utility cash ordinance and reserve?
That is a consideration, uh, yes, particularly, you know, I, and I'll say what it is, what I would say is if your, if your cash position was very, I'll say desperate. Let's say you're, I did a rate study earlier this year for a city that basically was down to about forty days of operating cash. Not anywhere near, y'all, y'all are like two hundred and forty days, so. Um, in their case, I didn't have any leverage or any uh flexibility to spread the rate increases. I was like, we needed to, and they had a ten percent increase from their power supplier. So look, we got to pass that through, I mean, we cannot wait for that. Your cash position is pretty good, I mean, it's, 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 it's decreased over the last couple of years based on capital projects that you've installed. I do think you'll see on the water and wastewater in particular, trying to get those two rates in order. But I think it was a consideration when I looked at it to make sure that over the next couple of years, you don't degrade that cash position any further than you have over the last couple of years.
That's what I was wondering.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was wondering your perspective, perspective on our cash.
It's, it's adequate right now, but I would like to see it, I, particularly in the water and wastewater, see you stop relying on cash to fund your operations and capital projects. All right, any other questions on that? All right, that was an easy one. Um, just to make sure, John, we're going to go through all four.
Yep.
And then, okay, I just want to make sure I got the order correct, so. On water utility. So by fiscal year twenty-nine, looking at about an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit. Yeah, you've been operating on it, when I separate out the four utilities, uh, looking at your financial results, and it's not necessarily easy to construct from your audit. But with your audit and your uh internal financial statements, I determined that you're, you've had a pretty significant cash deficit attributable to the water system over the last couple of years. A lot of that's driven by capital projects and these aren't projects you necessarily finance, but they're projects that are ongoing in nature. Main replacements, uh, hydrant replacements, things of that nature that you wouldn't necessarily issue bonds for. You know, upgrades at the water treatment plant to maintain compliance with various rules. That's probably the biggest driver on water. But I would say that the water and the wastewater is really the source of the concerns I have about your cash position and trying to make sure that we stop, stop eroding that. So, based on that, and there is still some deficit in the early years, but uh my recommendation would be a series of rate increases of twelve percent annually over the next three years. Now, when I get to the, one thing I would point out with water too is your rates are low, very competitive with your neighbors. And so sometimes what, that's, that's a blessing and a curse. Uh, because when you start to raise rates for that, you may have to raise it a larger percentage just to generate the revenue that you need to. The dollar per month change is relatively modest, I mean, probably less than a cup of coffee at Scooters. Um, if you drink the really fancy stuff like I do. But nonetheless, about forty-five percent rate increase over the next four years. And this is largely, again, driven by the capital projects and then just ordinary uh cost increases. Now generally, um, I'll say that these rate increases would be implemented across the board. I didn't see any major variances between rate classes on the water side that would dictate having a different rate change for commercial versus residential. The only major rate design change is I, right now, you have a single wholesale customer, a rural water district. I'm suggesting that you pull that out into a separate rate class and then in the future, look at that on a standalone basis. Uh, it's currently being billed at the residential rate. Uh, I, I think that it's appropriate to build them separately and base it on their meter size. I'm proposing again with this one, two rate changes to implement the first two twelve percent rate changes that I just talked about. And again, the twelve percent, you know, think about this, on the electric gives four point eight percent, it's over five dollars a month. Here we're raising rates about twelve percent, typical bill is probably a third of what your electric system rates are. So the typical increase would be four dollars and thirty-two cents in October of this year, an additional four dollars and eighty-four cents next year.
The ordinance does have a percent of water service in the ordinance.
Uh, I'm sorry?
There is a wholesale water service?
Yes.
In, in the ordinance?
There, yes, I've added that, that's a bit, that's new, it's not in the current ordinance, so. Yeah, the, the old ordinance did not have a separate rate for wholesale, it was embedded in the residential rate and um, so this will be separate going forward.
So by us passing this ordinance, would that move rural water from the residential rate to this wholesale?
Yes, it would, as of October first. And it's the same rate, right, it's the same rate they would have been paying on the residential, other than the meter charge being different based on their meter size. So, um, this shows where you're at what with regard to water utilities and these are in alphabetical order, so you know, they're not ranked, but you still have some of the lowest rates in the, among your peers. In this case, I look at Auburn and Fall City, um, look at Stewart and Wahoo similar size. I will tell you that uh Fall City just increased their rates, I believe it was six percent for the next two years. Um, so their rates have been going up and they're already higher than yours. Uh, I just retained by Wahoo to look at their rates, they're in a major growth scenario, they're, they're seeing a lot of growth. That growth comes at cost, uh, they're looking at rate increases to implement that, Stewart is sort of in the same boat for that as well. And I will not repeat the conclusions or recommendations. Um, again, the uh, rate schedule, the rate ordinance in Appendix A would implement those two rate changes. Any questions on the water system? All right, moving on to the wastewater. Again, I'm not going to repeat it, same situation as we saw in the water. Degradation of the cash position caused by capital projects, uh, debt service requirements, and just general operating deficit. What I'm recommending with this one is not as bad as with the water system. Um, still not great, but still twelve percent increase this year and a twelve percent rate increase next year. Uh, that would stabilize after twenty twenty-eight uh to a five percent and three percent, more typical of inflation. Again, a two-year rate change, uh, that would, you look, you need to look at it again probably in twenty twenty-eight, see what your capital projects look like and your operating expenses. Um, the only real change here, uh, we, there's a, you have one commercial rural customer, I think it's Arbor Links. And uh I felt it was appropriate to put them on a separate rate schedule just because of the different nature of what they do. It's the same rate they would have been charged under the other. And right now, you do have some language in there for multi-unit sewer customers. I'm proposing some clarifications because my first read of it, well, let me put it this way, my, my administrative assistant, Chris, she read it. And she's, she's been doing this stuff for ten years with me. She read it, she didn't know what it meant. And so I, I take that as a test of, okay, would a customer understand this? I read it and I didn't understand it, so we did some clarifications with the help of John and his staff. And once we understood the way it was being done, we wanted to make sure the wording reflected practice. And so that's what you'll see with the revised wording for the multi-unit customers. Typical increase for a residential wastewater customer is four dollars and fifty-six cents. In the first year, five dollars and ten cents a month, uh, next year. You have some high-strength customers, uh, some folks that have extra treatment costs. You check, you have a surcharge on those customers. I'm proposing that those rates be increased the same percentage as your other rates to reflect the cost of service. And those rates, I'll say, are on the higher end of peer group, but I know you've had problems with them, from what I understand from talking to staff, so. I think it's still appropriate to raise those rates that twelve percent.
And why the recommendation not to start that in March?
So. Uh, so that was, we, we reset the sewer, excuse me, the wastewater rates in March every year anyways, because it's based off of water usage in December, January, and February. So it made sense to, when we're going to reset the rates anyways, uh, to implement the rate increase at that time.
So that's when you get the winter, summer flow charge for wastewater?
Yeah, and it's also to help spread out the increased rate changes. So electric and water usually are heavy in the summer, and so if running those in the, in the fall, help our customers.
Same reason for natural draft, gas in May.
Correct.
Spread it out.
Yes, and May is also the time where we reset our, our rates. So that's a natural time for us to do it, so not only is it in the spring, but May is the time where we reload the destiny. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
And uh, so. Again, your rates appear to be fairly competitive with your neighbors. Uh, I know Auburn had, had a couple of rate increases here recently. Fall City's rates are going to be going up as well as Wahoo's, so. Again, that's not the primary driver of the rate changes, but I think it's a question that people will ask, uh, you know, sometimes ask, well, how's, how's my rate compared to X Y Z neighbor? I won't repeat this again, but this is the conclusion summarized. And the ordinance that you have in Appendix A would implement those rate changes in March of twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, again, look at the rates again in a couple of years, see how the costs are, and then determine if those future rate increases are required. Any questions on wastewater? All right, this one's easier, I promise. So there's a little bit of a deficit that certainly is not significant compared to water or wastewater. Again, there's a couple, general cost escalation, retaining employees, just cost materials, et cetera. Uh, there's a capital improvement plan in place for the gas system as well. This one's a three percent annual increase for the, uh, recommended for the next three years. Uh, after that, rates tend to stabilize and your, your revenue looks okay. When I looked at the cost of service, um, I'm recommending you increase the customer charge for residential. I'm also recommending looking at business B, which is your larger business customers. You have interruptible customer, which is, again, a larger customer as well. And then you have transport rate, which is charged to O P P D for gas delivered out to the power plant. Those rates look like they are under covered compared to the cost of service, so they're getting a larger recommended increase than your residential class. A dollar a month, again, this one would go into effect May first. After the end of the uh, winter heating season, so usage is starting to come down, less of an impact on customers uh having high bills at that time, so. Um, a dollar five a month, and as John said, we're spreading these increases over, over seven or eight months, so the, the major increase doesn't hit all in a single month. Again, I recommend that you, you have passed the Appendix A report, uh, ordinance. The gas system in the future, consider rate, rate changes if, if circumstances dictate. This pro- shows the schedule for all four of the rate classes and summarizes the monthly rate increase for all four utilities. Fifteen dollars a month, um, for fiscal year twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-seven would be about a little over fifteen dollars a month as well, so. That's the end of my presentation, I appreciate the questions, I'm happy to answer any further questions before you uh take uh the ordinance under consideration. Ordinances, excuse me.
Just in general, what you look at, our position is ours, where we stand operationally, engagement of our services. Do we look about right or?
We, we're talking about like your distribution system, the, or all, or generally?
Or it's in general.
Well.
Are we looking at huge upcoming bills because we're behind, we're, or this power plant or that water?
A lot, a lot of, yeah, yeah, a lot of the, the costs, especially in the electric system, are really driven by capital and projects, making sure that older feeders are replaced. Your pole, you, you inspect poles, replace them proactively rather than, I, I, I made a joke about a, a, one of my clients, their, their pole inspection program was windstorms. Wait for a windstorm to come through, whichever poles are fail, they're going to fail, but that's not a great way to replace your system. You all are much more proactive, when I drive around town, I can see feeders that have been replaced, the tree trimming is occurring. Those things are indicative of systems well-run and yes, you're going to have outages, you have that winds, yeah, snowstorm a couple, you know, back in March. Everybody had outages from that, even the best maintained systems did. Your, but your experience is prob- is much better than I'll say O P P D's was during that storm. Uh, they have an older urban areas, but not, not dissimilar to your urban, you know, the central part of your city with trees and, and wires, so. I think your system's in pretty good shape, your power supply resource next is, you were very proactive in the early two thousands, getting into Nebraska City two project, uh, the Wayland Energy Center two project as well. You, you wouldn't be able to get into those projects today, and if you did, it wouldn't be at that cost. So that was proactive, very, you know, good decisions from Leroy, uh, Fram and Jeff Coors. Uh, I've worked with both of those during earlier parts of my career, I even remember Bill Broccoli, so. I, I've got some experience working with Nebraska City over the years and you've done a great job with the system. I think the rates are competitive, system's in good shape. Uh, I, I can't, I think the, the main thing right now is just making sure the finances are, are in order so that you can continue to make those improvements going forward. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, John. I wish I could do one, the merger of three, do all four at one time, but I can't. We'll start with water. I'll introduce ordinance three one three five dash two five in title. Right now, sorry. Yeah, three one two three two five.
Ordinance number three one two three dash two five, an ordinance to establish a schedule of rates to be charged for water service, service furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska. Reveal ordinance number three one zero four dash twenty-three of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska. And all other ordinance and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and should declare effective date.
You have moved the Statute of Rules require reading on three different days to be suspended?
All seconded. Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, I declare a motion adopted by four personnel of the council of statute for rules suspended for consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-three dash twenty-five, an ordinance to establish a schedule of rates to be charged for water service furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska. Reveal ordinance number thirty-one dash, I'm sorry, thirty-one zero four dash twenty-three of the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska, and all other ordinance and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and should be declared effective date.
I move for final passage of ordinance thirty-one thirty-three dash twenty-five.
All seconded.
Discussion? I ask that ordinance thirty-one thirty-three dash twenty-five be passed and adopted.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. I declare ordinance thirty-one thirty-three dash twenty-five adopted and I shall sign the same in the presence of a court who will test this. I have fifteen of the ordinance for natural gas. I introduce ordinance thirty-one thirty-four dash twenty-five in title.
Ordinance thirty-one thirty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance, ordinance establishing a schedule of rates to be charged for natural gas service furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number thirty-one zero two dash twenty-three and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and should be declared effective date.
I move the Statute of Rules require reading on three different days to be suspended?
All seconded.
No call please?
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, I declare a motion adopted by four personnel of the council on statute for rules suspended for consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance establishing a schedule of rates to be charged for natural gas service furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number thirty-one oh two dash twenty-three and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and should be declared effective date.
I move for final passage of thirty-one thirty-four dash twenty-five.
All seconded.
Discussion? I ask that ordinance thirty-one thirty-four dash twenty-five be passed and adopted.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, I declare ordinance thirty-one thirty-four dash twenty-five adopted and I shall sign the same in the presence of a court who will test this. I introduce ordinance thirty-one thirty-five dash twenty-five in title.
Ordinance thirty-one thirty-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance establishing a schedule of rates to be charged for electric service furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number thirty-one oh, thirty-one zero five dash twenty-three and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and should be declared effective date.
I move for the Statute of Rules require reading on three different days to be suspended?
All seconded. Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, I declare a motion adopted by four personnel of the council on statute for rules suspended for consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance establishing a schedule of rates to be charged for electric service furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number thirty-one oh five, thirty-one zero five dash twenty-three and all other ordinances and parts of ordinance, ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and to declare effective date.
I move for final passage of ordinance thirty-one thirty-five dash twenty-five.
All seconded.
Discussion? I ask that ordinance thirty-one thirty-five dash twenty-five be passed and adopted.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes. I declare ordinance thirty-one thirty-five dash twenty-five adopted and I shall sign the same in the presence of a court who will test this. I introduce ordinance thirty-one thirty-six dash twenty-five in title.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-six dash twenty-five, an ordinance to establish a schedule of rates to be charged for wastewater services furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number thirty-one zero three dash twenty-three of the city of Nebraska, to be declared effective date.
I move the Statute of Rules require reading on three different days to be suspended?
All seconded. Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, I declare a motion adopted by four personnel of the council on statute for rules suspended for consideration of said ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-one thirty-six dash twenty-five, an ordinance to establish a schedule of rates to be charged for wastewater services furnished by the combined utility system of the city of Nebraska, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number thirty-one zero three dash twenty-three of the city of Nebraska, to be declared effective date.
I move for final passage of ordinance thirty-one thirty-six dash twenty-five.
All seconded.
Discussion? I ask that ordinance thirty-one thirty-six dash twenty-five be passed and adopted.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wainey? Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes, I declare ordinance thirty-one thirty-six dash twenty-five adopted and I shall sign the same in the presence of a court who will test this.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. With, thank you, John Moore. I have a team, resolution twenty-nine ninety-nine dash twenty-two, step eight, from F Y twenty-five slash twenty-six.
Resolution number twenty-nine ninety-nine dash twenty-five. A real fiscal year twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, that pay schedule for city employees. Section two dash nine, because the city of Nebraska, we provide a step-by-step age level for city employees. Can be updated by resolution. And the city, and whereas the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska updates its wages and salaries for city employees periodically, has a strategy to remain competitive in the marketplace, maintain employee satisfaction, remain responsible to tax payers. Whereas the attached step-by-step has been drafted in conjunction and conformity with the various city council budgets being issued during twenty twenty-five, and therefore be resolved by the, the city council of Nebraska, city. That the city council hereby adopts the schedule, the step-by-step attached here to as the step-by-step for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. For the various listed employee positions in the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska, the rates of pay as provided shall be effective from the first day of October twenty twenty-five and shall continue until the bid on future resolution.
I have a question as to the minimum wage positions. Do they go in that first of October or the first of June?
First of June.
But we haven't listed last fifteen. That's the last step, fifteen? Well, we're getting a budget with over thirteen fifty, but I bet, um, I'm genuine. I know there won't be a lot, it's a lot of the units.
New ones are probably going to be effective for house champions, because these are guys. Like Redmond does. Will close. So, back to the part time. Part study will be figured out.
It's not asking them to pay the full payment. I think it was, had to make a previous year. Ten years. Different than a lot of the seasons. I know a lot of our seasons is going to track down to the first year.
I know, but we're, we're bigger. Our time seems to be going to have a October three and a half.
You know, because there's, there's so few, our time employees. Because by this resolution, we're. Okay.
Hey, Randy, we're in our. Uh, I would move for passage of resolution two-nine ninety-nine and five, setting the step-by, schedule for customer year twenty-five test.
I should be second to discuss.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
I might name the special section, resigning the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Any questions? Go with section again, if you want to. The action is that we might address this. We have all finally received. Where are we, right there? And we will be attending to the value of eight postpartum insurance here because of our increased rate of property tax. And the Syracuse, I'm buying eighteen, that's just. The programs. Nothing else to discuss, no questions? Yes, you have any questions? I have twenty, resolution three thousand dash twenty-five, setting the property tax request.
Resolution number three thousand dash twenty-five, whereas Nebraska revised statute seventy-seven dash sixteen thirty-two and seventy-seven dash sixteen thirty-three provides that the government body of the city of Nebraska, city of Nebraska, by majority vote, a resolution or ordinance setting the tax request. And whereas the special public period wholesale has required by law to hear and insert comments concerning the property tax request, and therefore, the governing body of the city of Nebraska, city resolves that a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six property tax request be set at the general fund, one million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and ten cents. While the fund, nine hundred thousand dollars. Two, the total assessed value of property deburs from last year's total assessed value by seven twenty-three eight percent. Three, the tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of the property, would be zero point three four eight seven nine six per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Four, the city of Nebraska, city proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be zero point four seven nine seven six two per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Five, based on the proposed property tax request, the changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of the city of Nebraska, city will increase or decrease last year's budget by negative ten point nine four percent. Six, a copy of, copy of this resolution be certified and forwarded to the county clerk of honor for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, and I will move for passage of resolution three thousand dash twenty-five, setting the property tax.
All seconded.
Commissioner, second to the discussion. No problems?
Commissioner Osowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp? Mayor Beckett?
Yes.
A hundred percent you heard, but I think this is the first budget I've done on the property tax pass. It's higher than I said, it's a budget. I have seven forty-two billion.